Florence Drive Estates LLC.
Select which profile.
Do we did it?
Okay, well, we'll let Eric get set up, but I want to call to order a work session for June 17th at 2:00 PM. Can I get a roll call, Mr. Teddy?
Councilperson Tony Abbott.
Here.
Councilperson Dinah Little.
Present.
Councilperson Tommy Rallett.
Present.
Councilperson Cindy Frim.
Here.
Councilperson Brett Bondurant.
Yes, sir.
City Attorney Dale Wil.
Here.
Mayor Kelly Milan.
Here.
And myself.
Okay, today we are gonna be involved in a prep with, Steve and Brian are gonna present. I don't know if Eric's gonna present on their half or whatever, but we'll let them get set up. And this is for a potential housing project.
I just minimized.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, I didn't close it.
I know you could get her done.
Be good. All right, that's not bad.
Whoa, 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 that's what we're looking for.
All right, well, go ahead and bring this to a vote then.
No, no.
Here, do you want to steal this one?
I don't care, that's fine.
We'll leave that on there, but you can just put yours in front of there.
Cover up the other one on the left-hand side.
Wow.
That one.
Wow, that's just cool, man.
What's that one? Isn't that the same thing?
No, this is the pavilion.
Yeah.
Pretty much you pop it off her. It's like I need three more handles to get it up there.
See, really, yeah.
All right, that's not bad. Not bad. It's up there, too. All right, everybody good? Okay. My name's Eric Lang. I'm with Land Consultants. I've been working with these gentlemen for, gosh, probably about a year now, it seems like, trying to work on what could we possibly do with the piece of property that's up there adjacent to and behind Walmart? So between the apartments in the back and the end of Walmart's parking lot, what could we do with that piece of property that's laid dormant for quite a while? So we've looked at some different sources, one of them being the One Dearborn Housing Study, some other things related to what's going on in Dearborn County, what does Dearborn County need? I'm sure if any of you have been to any of those One Dearborn meetings where they talk about these things, it's housing and somewhat affordable housing is one of the things that continuously comes up as far as what does a growing community like Lawrenceburg need? So what this is, is a development which includes somewhere on the neighborhood of 200 units which are intended to be apartments, and they're anywhere from a one-bedroom to a three-bedroom. Most of them kinda in that two-bedroom range with some outliers as far as a handful of three-bedroom and a handful of one-bedroom. But overall, this is about 2-210 as far as the number of units. It's in multiple buildings, and this would be located along that street, both on the, kinda the old Walmart or Wilson Creek side of the road, as well as on the hillside of the road as it goes back between Walmart and the existing development that's at the very end of the road there.
So you're saying it's gonna be on both sides?
Correct. Correct. I think, let's just say, kind of a one-third, two-thirds split roughly as far as one-third on the Wilson Creek side of that road and the other two-thirds on the landing in between the road and where that hillside goes up.
Are you wanting to put them up close to, I know the one on the left would be up at this end, but is the other one going down the other end or is this coming up here by Walmart?
Say that again?
Like, when you go down through there?
Mm-hmm.
I know the one's gonna be on the left, and then you've got that vacant lot on the right.
Both sides.
Are you gonna put it back here toward the other apartments or are you gonna leave it up here toward Walmart?
There will probably be some other things that are kinda close to that Walmart parking lot. There'll be a bit of a buffer before the housing starts. So, yeah, it's not gonna be right at the end of the Walmart parking lot. It's gonna be somewhat pushed back there so that you get away from that retail space and then you start going into more of a residential space.
Mr. Frum, just for clarification, we last May in planning zoning already turned.
Right, I know that.
Part of that from business manufacturing, general manufacturing to residential, the left-hand side.
Yeah, that was the one on the left side.
On the left, correct, yes.
Yes, so there's some zoning things that we've already kinda talked about and somewhat put in place as far as setting the stage to move forward with a development project like this. So this is a rendering. I guess I wanna back up for just a second. So this is not something, I mean, I'm not artsy at all. I draw things about as well as I knit. We have an architect that's up in Indianapolis that has done a lot of projects like this. After a lot of talking back and forth as far as, hey, what product do you have? And what product have you seen throughout the years of doing this type of development that is both best bang for your buck as far as square footage per dollar spent? And what works from the standpoint of multifamily and trying to get that cost down, but also a product that looks nice and works? So this is kinda what he has found has been most cost-effective. That is a three-story building. I think he's calling it like a garden patio home. There's some words he's using for what he calls this, but essentially, this is kind of form meeting function where of the developments he's done, this is what he has found has worked well, has been cost-effective. It results in a good mix of the amount of square footage you need, but also in an affordable package where you're building something where you're truly getting the most square footage for the dollar input to the building. So this, this look would basically kinda be copied. I mean, there's little small nuances to make it look like it's not just a carbon copy of every building. You can see the construction's probably not that different, but different colors, different finishes, different facades. You know, it kinda reminds me of that old Ro House look when you maybe look at an old downtown Cincinnati where you've got these kinda tall, narrow buildings and they're stacked one right next to the other. That's kind of the more urban, modern look that you're seeing here. So we've got a couple of things we can share as far as images, but for the most part, this, now, this site that you're gonna see here, the 200 units that we're talking about is just this down here. So Walmart being, if you can see, can you see? Ah, you can barely see my cursor. On the south end of the screen there where Walmart's parking lot is, you can see there's a parking lot and at that, and in that rendering, a pool which is still kinda up for debate. And then the development of those buildings goes back along the street there. This is not including those two cul-de-sacs in the street that you see up on top of the hill. This is kind of a prior rendering, but that area up there is also potentially in play. If this project goes off the way we think it will, you could either modify the, the product that you're putting out there and do something different on the top of that hill, or if we're going like gangbusters at the bottom of the hill, you could copy that same thought and do something up higher and build out more than just the 200 units that we're showing. So this is just one of our pencil sketches where we're trying to think of different things and work through what we feel is gonna be the best fit for that area right there. So, any questions so far?
My first question is gonna be, and I brought it to your attention back in May of last year, my concern is traffic.
Sure.
On that road.
Sure.
We're all aware what it's like on holidays down there at Walmart trying to get in and out. Now you're bringing in more traffic with rental.
So your peak traffic at Walmart is not necessarily gonna be your same peak traffic when these individuals are coming and going? So that, that helps. It's not just a one-for-one. You add 200 people and it's two-
And they're all coming out once.
And it's 200 cars at the worst time that Walmart is having its worst time. So part of that could be mitigated with a traffic study, and you're probably gonna retime some lights at the bottom of the hill to let a little more traffic out at a given cycle. You know, there's also the potential as this thing gets bigger and bigger, you have another connection that goes around and dumps out down there where the cell phone, you know, that little plaza with firehouse subs and all those guys. You know, you could eventually see a light down there. And in all honesty, the few times I've pulled out of there and taken my life into my own hands, you probably need a light there sooner rather than later. But I think the infrastructure's there with little modification. You could certainly make things better, and if that didn't provide enough impact, you know, another light at that other exit.
We inquired about a light there at one time, and NDOT had no interest in it.
Yeah.
Because really, I mean, it's a ride-out only. You can't hardly get across.
It is, that's right. Yep.
A ride-in and a ride-out, I mean, quite honestly, but that could help.
Yes. NDOT generally likes to play the, the traffic calculation game. Until they have the traffic counts that warrant spending that money, they don't really care that you feel like it's a good idea. They just have a book that they go by with what warrants a signal or a ride-in, ride-out, or whatever. And until the math kinda falls in that range or until you get a handful of people killed, they don't really wanna play ball, unfortunately. I've played that game with them as well. So, but I, the good thing is, is the infrastructure's there. You wouldn't have to build an entirely new street, create an entirely new infrastructure or an entirely new intersection on US 50 in order to have multiple ways to people.
So how would you tie in then to that? Would you tie it from the top and go down the other side, or how would you tie into that other?
It would probably depend on how quickly that other end would develop. If we got to a point where that first phase of 200-some units, if, if that kinda was the tipping point, you know, initially you can run people through Walmart's parking lot. That's not the ideal situation, but people are gonna do that. Yeah, and then the other thing obviously is, yes, this, this property has access or these individuals have property access on that other road. And if that needed, you know, you could obviously build that road up and over there and tie in a lot quicker than you can put up another 50 units up there. So if that warranted that traffic modification to do that, that's within the reach of what these guys have control over from a property standpoint. And I think that road gets developed eventually anyway. It's just a matter of, do you develop it when you're putting houses up there or do you make that connection?
Are you talking about that backside road, like the leisure pool?
Yep, yep. So we can access that over there. There's even, I mean, there's more development potential over there as well. Right now, what we're trying to do is what is the most shovel-ready at the moment that if you had the plan done and approved, you could literally start building, well, as soon as the rain stops, anyway? And, and literally, that road that you see going past Walmart and continuing on, most of the infrastructure that you need is there.
That's a mess down there at Walmart down there, where they put those stop signs. Wish they had to do that, but.
Yeah, at the intersection.
That's a mess down there now, and you put a lot of traffic here. What are you talking about? Is it road rage? That's gonna be a mess.
Not everybody has a temper like you.
I'm mild as they come. I'm the easiest-going fellow around.
You, you said that these are looking to be affordable or somewhat affordable housing.
Yes.
Is there funding through the state or how, how are you guys managing to pull the affordable housing?
Funding as far as the development side of it. I mean, there may be. I don't think we've explored that in particular. One thing we don't want to be is we don't want to be in that low income where we're handcuffed to a specific rate. We want this to be kind of a freestanding project that our, our goal and the pro forma that we've put together is set up so that you're in that $1,300, $1,400 range per month for rent, which is obviously not-
For a two-bedroom or one?
Yeah, one, two, three.
Yeah, I think that was our average, and the majority of it's your two. Yeah, so, so you're gonna have threes that are a little higher and you're gonna have ones that are a little less, but the lion's share of the units are intended to be two bedrooms. That's mostly what the demand is, is asking for. So if you're hanging in that $1,300 to $1,500 range to make the, the dollars and cents work as best you can with your development costs, you're nowhere near what Whiskey City is, but you're also not what your low-income rent is. So with your average starter home being in the $300 and some thousand range these days, which is five, six times what it was when I was looking for my first house, you're gonna have these guys that are just your fresh-out-of-college white-collar guy or your blue-collar guy that's got a halfway decent job that wants something nice, doesn't wanna be in low income, but can't get on the list or can't afford $2,000 a month at Whiskey City or something like it. So this is a product where the people that you want in your town, the 20-somethings that are gonna have kids and maybe stay here or the retired people that don't want their farm anymore but wanna live somewhere closer to town that has something newer, but it's decent, this is that demographic of what we're trying to offer. And I don't care where you go in this country, if you build this, they will come. Like, this is, this is, if you can find this, you're getting on a list trying to get into it.
I got another question. How's, how are you gonna do your parking?
So we, we've got parking, I mean, like, yeah, I mean, we've got some better, I don't know if we've got better pictures. Right now, we've got the plan for what's on the left side of the road. The building will actually be up closer to the street and the parking will be in the back. That's our plan there. And then on the other side, we have freedom to really park wherever. There's, there's more room there than what we need as far as depth. So parking should not be a problem. You're not gonna have a space where you pull into a garage in your unit, per se, but there will be parking that meets and exceeds the code for Lawrenceburg as far as what your density is.
So Phase, Phase 1 is like 210?
216. Exact number, yeah. 216.
And Phase 1 is essentially all of those buildings you see along that, what is that? Sycamore Estates Drive? So obviously, you're not gonna build every one of those simultaneously. You're gonna probably have two buildings under construction at any given time. And based on what we've done research on and what the market's kinda showing us will happen, you will get things rented out about as quick as you can get buildings done, within reason. So if that happens, this project will constantly be under construction until that's built out. You'll, you'll have people moving in on one side of the street and people hammering nails on the other side of the street as this continues to roll on. And if, if it goes the way we think it will, about halfway through this, we're gonna have to figure out what we're gonna do on top of the hill, if anything. Are we gonna keep going with this? Are we gonna switch gears? And the good thing is, is we've got the ability to switch gears if we need to and do something slightly different if the market needs more three-bedrooms, more one-bedrooms. We can make those adjustments, but we've done enough digging and, you know, knock on enough doors. We think this is pretty much the right direction and with some slight adjustment, we can, we can do what the market feels like it needs. So a project like this, regardless of whether you're in Fishers, Indiana or Lawrenceburg, Indiana, or somewhere up north, in order to make a project like this get off the ground and go requires obviously a big commitment from the developer as well as some level of partnership from the local municipality or the county or whoever. So part of the reason we're here is to gauge what interest the city has. Is this project something that you feel like is an asset to the city of Lawrenceburg? And if that answer is yes, then part of the question is, is what is there, if any, appetite for some level of assistance or partnership in moving this thing forward? And that can be anything from, I mean, and Dell can probably speak to some of the different mechanisms that a city or, or entity like that would help a developer, whether it be TIF funding or something like that, to help drive this forward and be that final push to get it to where it comes from being something you're talking about in this meeting room to where it's actually something that can be pushed forward. But that is part of what we're here, is to try to explain what we feel like would fit well there, what we feel would be an asset to the community, and then kinda lay our cards out or go into this deeper if we feel like this is something that the city would like to help give a little push as well and, and get this rolling.
It's in my council district. I would say personally, I think, I can't speak for everyone, but for me, I would say there's an appetite, right? Because most of my district, there's apartments right within that area. And when I was out knocking doors, that's one of the number-one complaints that I always hear is that there's not enough housing. For me, I would say the biggest thing is knowing what the ask is in terms of-
Sure.
Help.
Sure.
I think that's something that's going to be, need to be outlined.
Absolutely.
That way, we kind of know what that ask actually is.
Sure.
The other, the other piece of that, obviously, the ask, but is if you guys have an appetite and you're gonna TIF this sort of similar to Whiskey City, you'd need to know what kind of property tax it's gonna, a, a development like this is going to bring in, because that would depend on what your commit, commitment would be.
We have put, we wouldn't be here if we hadn't ran those numbers and tried to make sure that this is more than just a pretty picture. So we can certainly share those with you now in a few minutes at a later date, however you would like to see it. But, yeah, we, we did not want to assume you were interested and ram that down your throat on day one and say, here's what we think we need. In round figures, this is somewhere on the neighborhood of a $40 million project between what the development group has already got in land cost and things related to that, as well as loans that they would have to take out to get this going. That is somewhere in the neighborhood of, well, north of $35,000, $35 million is what they're, they're part of that. And I think the part that they were looking to get some assistance on, and again, this is very round numbers. I'm just giving you something so you get an idea of what we're talking about, is somewhere in the $5 million range. So that would be somewhere in the neighborhood of less than 10% of the total project as far as that. And we would look to ask for things that are easy for the city to help with as far as protecting the city's interests, like TIF funding or infrastructure or things that you can pay for that are obviously in the city proper. It's, it's things that are there. You can't run away with not just, hey, here's a check and let us know when the buildings are up.
From, from start to finish, how long would it take to do Phase 1?
A given building, we were talking-
216 units.
Yeah, a given building, if you were to build one building, start to finish, we think that's about an 18-month process. So if you were to start building them in, in phases, I think you could have all of that there in a, in an amount of three years, something like that. If, if you were to, you know, start the first one and then by the time you hand the key over on the last one, I think that's, you go from zero units to 200 units in the course of about three years.
No, I think it would be quicker than that.
I'm, I'm just trying to be realistic as far as how quickly it could turn over.
Where I'm going is, so you wouldn't need the $5 million upfront?
I don't believe so.
Kelly, there's a lot of different ways to structure it. I mean, I, I'm not sure how Whiskey City knows, but I mean, in the form of a TIF, I'm, my investment group's doing a deal in Westfield right now, and it's, there's a lot of ways to kinda get to where you need it. From, you know, you got bank covenants, you got investors, you got city demands. I mean, just trying to put it all together and trying to figure out what works.
Explain that Westfield deal a little bit.
So ironically, the, the, Westfield is a really fast-growing community just north of Carmel. It's actually, I think, one of the fastest-growing in the country, but.
Grand Park.
Grand Park, yeah, where all the ball fields are and stuff like that. So doing a very similar project in Westfield, 100, 100 apartment units and 30,000 square feet of retail, dollar size, about the same. But, you know, basically, I mean, they're just TIF-ing the project and making it nice and desirable. And basically, they're just, the, the city didn't really wanna put any money in, so they just basically used TIF dollars and kinda flows through the deal, if you will. I mean, the project's generating, I think it's generated $20 million in property tax over a 25-year period, similar to this, not quite that much, but similar. And you just kinda use those dollars to, to generate the revenue, to kinda get it over the top. But in that case, little different, I mean, we're getting $2,000 square feet or $2,000 an apartment, whereas here, I mean, the pro forma's more in the $1,300 to $1,500 a month. You just, you know, a pro forma, we just don't think you're gonna get $2,000 a month, nor if we do, great. I mean, it's, it helps everybody, but we don't think that's realistic down here. So obviously, just when you get into loans and valuations and tax dollars, I mean, the value of these multifamily deals are based how much gross revenue they generate. So obviously, if you have a property that's generating $2,000 a month in rent, it's gonna be worth a lot more than something that's only $1,300 or $1,400. So, but there's, you know, as, as Eric said, there's a lot of different ways to try to structure it to, that makes sense for everybody to kinda get it over the top. For us, you know, no developer's gonna come in and, and it's just not Lawrenceburg. It's any really tertiary city in the country. You just can't afford to make this work with building anywhere, you know? If, if you're only gonna get $1,300, $1,400 a square, or $1,300 or $1,400 a month rent with the, where the construction costs are. So, you know, these cities are coming in and getting creative or doing whatever they need to do to kinda help to, to get them over the top, to make them sense financially. So, does that answer your question?
Yep.
But I, I, I think realistically, is put pressure on Stevie and this, and folks, but I, I think, you know, probably two years max. I mean, if they started this in the fall, it'd probably take through the spring of '27. You know, a lot of it depending on weather, but, you know, as Eric mentioned, I mean, it's pretty much shovel-ready. So, you know, realistically, this, you know, the first building could start sometime late summer, fall timeframe. And just, as you mentioned, just kinda stack them, you know, going forward.
Yep.
Have you checked in on the utilities? Would a sanitary sewer handle all that, that amount of units?
I believe so. I mean, you've got sanitary sewer all the way back there to the apartments, right?
We decided that it'll itch it over.
Yeah, I mean, with, I mean, and I, I've not looked at what that prior design is, but if you built a street that long to service those guys all the way back there and you didn't figure that at some point you were gonna have development all along that, yeah, somebody was totally asleep at the wheel. So I think.
Just wanna make sure.
Yeah, no, I mean, we, we-
We put it, I think it's an eight-inch.
Yeah, yeah, you can, you can put a lot of homes on an eight-inch when that's, the other thing is, is there's nobody uphill behind them-
Right.
-that's coming through that. It's pretty much that apartment and nobody else. So, yeah.
That probably goes in on the US 50 West Main and it's-
It does.
That's separate and goes to the wastewater plants and.
I talked to Garrett.
Gotcha.
He, he said it should be plenty, more than enough capacity there. And we've got good water, too.
Right, right.
The only thing we're kinda missing is electricity. We don't, there's, there's a couple of different ways we could grab that. We could get that down on the, where they'll get in place floods or, or the pools. That's where they-
On Florence or whatever?
Yeah.
On underground?
What's that?
Would you go underground?
Honestly, I think we could go across the back of Walmart, overhead.
I meant for the running?
Yes, yes, absolutely. I mean, we could, we could run some overhead over, you know, to the, maybe somewhere where the parking lot is. And then from the parking lot of Walmart, go underground.
But, but streetlights?
Yeah, are you gonna put up some streetlights back there for me? How many times?
Somebody's all for streetlights. Actually, most of the people back there would love it.
Yeah.
Tell them.
How many times have you heard me on this?
Oh, so much, so much. No, I, I would like to put, yeah, for sure. And, and you know what? Nice streetlights. I mean, if you go back to the first rendering, I mean, look, we, we want this to be nice and a desirable place to live and, and, you know, I mean, we plan on holding it forever. So, I mean, it's, it's, it's part of the investment of, if you go to the first, one of the first or second renderings, you know, having nice, these state-of-the-art type of streetlights along there that, you know, that's, that's appealing.
Is the sewer and the water stuff, is that, is that us?
Yes.
I know there's some questions down there on the, where-
This was all, this land was all annexed.
They're having, down there, I know part of that's Roar and part of it's us.
Well, my council district, buddy.
Oh, and annexed, and it's us.
Yeah, we, years ago, that was the answer.
I, I think we'd need to defer to Reedy and Baker Tilly on what we could do. In my head, I'm looking, I, I would think that we run it through TIF is how I look at it, because I think that's kind of keeping the cash flow and stuff like that. I don't know what you guys think or what your guys' input is on that, but I would think run it through TIF and then obviously, we'd, we'd need advice from Baker Tilly or I think that'd be Reedy or whoever it is at that point.
Yeah, I mean, those, those, all those attorneys, they all work together with those communities. I mean, the attorneys that we use are just gonna know, I'm sure the attorneys you use and if there's interest-
You're talking $5 million from TIF? I mean, is that gonna be a one-time deal or when you start this other, you're gonna come back again or? back again, or how does that work?
No, I mean, that's-
Don't open the door for that, Lenny, you say one time.
I mean, that would be, that would be phase one, if there's a phase two. I mean, again, it's just the construction costs are such to where, you know, depending on what phase two means, I mean, we even talked about doing more of a garden variety of, maybe more like a condo development site, where, you know, empty nesters can come and buy a place, or first-time homebuyers can come and buy a place on that second phase. A lot of it, like Eric said, it really depends on, on just what the market demands. And a lot of it just depends on, on, you know, the success of it, as far as what phase two looks like and what the ask would be there. But no, this 5 million would be just for phase one. And, you know, as Eric mentioned, I mean, we put the numbers together. I mean, we think it's a great deal for everybody. I mean, if you don't get it, if we don't get it, doesn't get built, and, you know, there's 15, 16 million dollars of tax revenue that doesn't flow through somewhere.
Yeah, I'm having a hard time visualizing a lot of this right here. I mean, you know, I'm thinking, I've been back there a few times, past Walmart, you know, once, a couple times, driving the bus, enough kids. But it seems like on the right, on the back, you got, it's just gravel, or whatever, or just clay, or whatever, just, you know, and then you got a big cliff.
Yeah, there's enough for, we're-
So basically, you're, you're basically, oh, so you're gonna basically-
Yeah, we'll grade, that'll all get regraded, that's-
Yeah, I was gonna say, you got that development on top, and I'm thinking, boy, this, if they all go out and drink one night, they're gonna fall over.
No, that'll all be regraded, yeah. The way that's laid out now, this, I mean, it's been under construction for years.
And I noticed that in your picture, you got all those beautiful trees and stuff, and I'm thinking, I don't see any of those. Maybe I missed them when I was driving.
Well, you know what? I believe it or not, when we did Waterview Apartments back there, it looked just like the front of that. And if you go back now, it's all-
So you're grading, kind of leveling that whole thing off, and, and on the left side, is there a drop, or is it just all flat for a while?
It's pretty flat, it's flat.
Is it flat for a while, and it drops off?
There's like, there's about 20 acres over in there, but it does drop off into the Wilson Creek.
So could you-
But we're building them flats back.
Could you actually put another annex and put a bridge across down there, go off Wilson Creek? Traffic got to be bad.
You'd spend a lot of money doing that.
Oh, you don't own that?
We don't own it all the way to Wilson Creek.
Okay.
No, but we'll build a bridge if you want one. How big a bridge you want?
Hold on, I'm just thinking, Tommy's first question to traffic, that would be mine, that would be like-
Yeah.
You know, that's a huge question.
With that traffic, I mean, when we were working back there and running dump trucks, and actually, just working, period, we never had an issue down on that line at all. Not, I didn't have one incident down on the US-50.
Well, see, now, there's a stop sign right at the bottom of that hill, and I know there's a lot of congestion right there.
Sure, sure.
I mean, 'cause they gotta be able to get out of Church's Chicken and all that, and it's Popeye's. I don't know why you got Church's. I'm thinking of Church's, that's what we had last night.
Yeah, we did have one.
You quit pulling his chicken.
Popeye's.
One thing that I think-
No, I had Chicken from Church's.
One thing that I think that this group should talk about is an impact assessment fee. And the only reason why I say that is there, obviously with us, there's an impact to that city road. And I think that's something that we should be looking at, because there's going to be repairs that come from it, and so forth, and so, so forth and so on. And I know that those can take time to get those studies done as well. I don't wanna hold you guys up, but that's something that I've seen done in other private developments that we've not done previously, and it's, in the long term, it's came back to backfire on us.
You know, the traffic issue, I don't know, does anybody know anybody that lives in Waterview?
I do.
Do you live in Waterview? I mean, do you-
I know a lot of people back there.
I mean, have you heard big traffic complaints from those?
Um, not traffic complaints, the main, the main things that I hear about are the potholes that are up there, that's, again, impact assessment fee, and no streetlights. Those are the two main complaints that I hear.
You say potholes, where are you?
It's in front of Walmart, so it's even-
Yeah, it's not, I was gonna say. I don't think traffic would be a major issue.
Yeah.
If you look at any multifamily development, I mean, the max, a person going in and out of 200 units is maybe, what, 10 an hour?
I don't see the traffic issue besides Black Friday, which I don't think that's from these apartments, I think it's all the craziness on Black Friday at Walmart, right? Like, that's where I see the craziness. The traffic concerns don't worry me as much, especially if there ends up being something going out the back way, and they go out and take a right or something like that. They're not always going to be going down Sycamore State, take the left to come towards Lawrenceburg, they're gonna be going towards Aurora, wherever. The traffic part doesn't concern me as much, it's the lighting.
Why would anybody go to Aurora?
I don't know, maybe they want Alejandro's. But the streets, streetlights, stuff like that, those would be my two main concerns with back there.
Yeah, streetlights are needed, for sure.
Well, we know they ask, we gotta probably consult with Reedy and have them take a look at the property tax projection, things like that.
We can give you our numbers as well and share those with you, just knowing that it's our best guess, but it's an educated guess, based on some things that we know.
I mean, there's a few things, like, I did just a real simple analysis, I took River, was it?
Whiskey City.
Whiskey City, and their assessed values at like 14 or 15 million.
It's very grossly under assessed.
I agree, I agree, but-
We're fighting that.
They, they, that generates roughly, it was like, I think, $1,900 a unit.
Per unit.
And I think that's low, so, but I just used that analysis, so this is just something that, this is actually a very separate format that we use for the Westfield deal, and actually, our attorneys came up with it. But, you know, basically, just take 216 units times like $1,900-
For the property tax.
Property tax.
We have a property tax deal, so you guys would be willing to agree to that.
Sure.
We also have a guarantee with them that they own that.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
So that you wouldn't be able to sell that.
No, no, we have no intention of selling it. Yeah, I mean, which is, look, guys, it's part of the reason, I mean, you know, look at Waterview, I mean, we made that all break. We gave everybody all low-income decks. I mean, we built that to own it long-term, I mean, that's the goal. So I mean, it, you know, we wanna make this as nice and desirable as possible, you know, at a affordable rent.
How long would you agree to own your dividend?
Oh, well, I mean-
And your guarantee of ownership with a guaranteed tax minimum, property tax.
No problem at all.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's the goal, I mean-
I just wanna make sure that the property tax minimum makes sense, right? Because I know our property tax minimum up there is $365,000, but we also committed-
No, the minimum's 300.
300?
Well, so I mean, in this, so if you do, and I agree with Kelly, I think, I was, I was surprised when I saw the assessment at only 14 million.
Yeah.
So I mean-
But that's why we did that, because if you get some of their assessment, I'll worry about it.
Yeah, so I mean, in this case, I mean, you look, so again, it's just apples to apples. You know, if this appraises for the similar level, the appraisal would basically generate $420,000 a year in property tax, and that's, I think, at a reasonably low level per year. And then, you know, a modest growth rate each year of 3%, so you can kinda see, the first year would generate $420,000 of property tax, next year would generate 432, it'd grow by, you know, $12,000 a year, it gets reassessed. So after a 25-year period, the project actually generates $15 million, $15,312,000 of property tax. That, you know, in Westfield's case, I mean, they basically, they look at these numbers, and that's, if you guys ever drive around Carmel or Westfield, I mean, it's amazing the new construction they got, they got going on up there. And these are really high affluent areas, but it's all doing this. I mean, they're just taking the property that they assess, and they generate, and they put it back in the form of a TIF, and they make them nice.
Carmel's a billion dollars in debt, and they fund it through TIF.
Yeah, it's all through TIF. It's all through, and all through TIFs. And then I remember when Mayor Maynard, Maynard, is that his name?
Brainerd.
Brainerd, when he was doing this 10, 20 years ago, I mean, everybody complained, and what are they doing?
He was a genius.
Genius. And you go driving Carmel now, it's ranked the number one city in the country to live. I mean, it is beautiful, it's all doing just these, just TIF deals. Our city looks pretty darn good. And it does, hey, it's, hey, there's a reason, aside from being here, I mean, I think the city of Lawrenceburg is an unbelievable, desirable place to live. You got great amenities, you got great locations, you know, I mean, there's just, it's like any small town, you got issues, whether it's housing, whether it's employment, but, you know, a product like this, you know, and the pro forma that we kinda put together on the rents, this will kinda break down the pro forma. You know, we're running this at $1,300 a square feet, or $1,300 a month. I mean, that's gonna allow the casino worker, or the school teacher, or the, you know, the school teacher right now, a beginning school teacher, they couldn't, they couldn't afford to live in one of the low-income housing apartments down here. There is no housing down here. You're getting $50,000, you're, you can't, you can't rent a low-income apartment.
You do know this goes completely against our comprehensive plan, though.
And?
Because we were way upside down on rentals versus owner-up.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I mean, unfortunately, this product is really just, I mean, this land is really made for that. But, I mean, the only market rate apartments in the city of Lawrenceburg, really, all southeastern Indiana, is Whiskey City. I mean, we're talking Aurora, Morris Hill, Rising Sun, there is no market rate apartments down there. You just can't afford to buy in Lawrenceville, sir.
Thanks, Brian.
Unless you get some help. So this is our, this is our analysis of what the rents would cost.
Thank you, sir.
So you can see, it's significantly less expensive than Whiskey City. Two-bedroom, with pro forma now, $1,350 a month. Three-bedroom, $1,500, two-bedroom with $1,200. You know, even like, even like Waterview, I think their top rent is like $1,000, but if you make more than $40,000, you can't live there. So I, you know, and that's for every, every apartment complex in the city. You know, if anybody makes over $40,000, they have no place to live, unless they go to Whiskey City and pay $2,000 a month.
Or they go to a different community.
Or they go to, you know, Florence, or, really across the river is where they go, you know? Because this, this product's everywhere, you know, over in Cincinnati, or Florida, in your suburbs, but they're charging $2,000 a month too, over there as well. So, so anyway, the tax analysis is that, you know, there's, there's a lot of ways for the city to participate, whether you TIF it, and you do, you know, the Westfield deal's all what they call a developer-backed bond, so it's responsibility of the developer to pay the loan, if they don't, you know, the developer has to come out. We're pretty confident, though, that the project itself will cover the property tax. And I think that 420's kinda low, but, you know, I think that's, those are somewhat conservative But it, you know, the project more than pays for itself over a long period of time, I mean, even, even if the city would just stroke a check for $5 million, which we're not expecting you to do that, but even if you did, you know, generate $420,000 of guaranteed property tax at a pretty good rate of return. That also doesn't account, and I asked Eric this, I'm not quite sure how, how income tax works, but Davenport County's income tax rate is 1.4%.
It's gonna change.
Split between the county and city, I'm, I, he told me a lot of it flows to the city, but if the average person in here makes $50,000, that's, that's an extra $150,000 a year of, of income tax, plus, you know, eating at the restaurants, and paying sales tax, and-
Going to schools.
Going to schools, I mean, you know, it's, you have 200 families.
I don't think schools can handle it anymore.
Well, South Davenport will be able to.
Yeah, they can.
Yeah, they definitely can.
But they're getting rid of buildings, so I don't know.
But it, but it's, it's the kind of tenant that you want, you know, you want the young professional, maybe the person that, you know, sells their farm, or sells their house, and wants to live part-time in Florida, but wants to still have a presence in Lawrenceburg, or-
Somebody that doesn't wanna cut grass.
You know, they're, you know, it's, it's a good product. At that price point, we feel really confident that it's gonna lease up.
Well, I, I think you've heard the positivity, I think we just, we gotta get some numbers put together and determine how we would maybe look at the financing piece of it on our end of the $5 million piece of it.
When do you need an answer by?
Just, you know, I mean, we've, we've owned it for a long time, so, whatever, obviously, sooner the better. If we'd like to start this year, the sooner the better, but I mean, you know, hey, we're not going anywhere, so, you know?
I wanna start it sooner too, but-
Yeah. I mean, ideally, I would love to get this started in the fall.
Okay.
And then, you know, have maybe, being able to cob a couple buildings up to where you can start working on those through the winter months. You know, maybe have three of those buildings, maybe have 20, 50, 60 units, foundation all the way, before the winter breaks.
That'd be nice.
Yeah.
Any other questions, guys?
If you guys come up with anything, my, my email's out there, it's pretty easy, and I can get it to you if you don't have it already, but by all means, just shoot me a question if you have anything, and I'm sure we've probably got it answered, or we've asked that question ourselves, so happy to connect the dots for you if you missed anything to help you. All right? Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys, appreciate it.
Thank you, guys. Thanks, Brian, Steve, Eric. All right, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some of them. Second.
Own favor?